There you go, you're live.
Thanks.
Howdy.
Hi Albert, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
How do you do this?
Well. I'll sure grab a chair up there.
Okay, I'll just grab a chair.
Camera's on.
Okay.
Albert, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Okay. Darby?
Hey.
Wow, why do I get so much stuff in my league? Oh, did you? Oh, okay.
She was just like, she's coming up like.
It's cool, those are neat. You guys had a lot of?
Yeah.
I was just like, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Change a lot of it.
Yeah, it's amazing what happens.
Yeah, that is overnight.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, see, I was.
The other one.
Did you have?
With all this.
Yeah.
She was cool.
She did.
Good, I took her out.
Yeah. Yeah, she starts tomorrow.
And why does she have something really close to her? They're doing that right. Hospital, so that's good. I'm a little bit. Classroom stuff.
Yeah, how are you?
Let's just have seven.
You guys YouTube your meetings or do you Zoom them?
On YouTube though. I still have your.
Glitches.
Like that and um. Hey, how are you?
So, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, I guess we heard Glitch is the biggest reason. I know you tried a bunch of stuff, but.
Yeah.
Keep coming back to.
YouTube. That's what we.
I guess.
Live stream all the committee meetings right now, so. We do YouTube, we do Zoom for the members.
Thanks.
But we live stream to the public on, just on YouTube.
Do you football?
Nice.
Yeah, I was just there.
Cool, how's it going?
Good, really good. I've got handful of kids. Oh, good.
Pretty warm.
Oh, man.
Right. Terrible.
What, it's ninety-two today? Ninety-two down here?
Yeah.
Cool.
Yesterday, when we were going down to the large Kyle's thing, it hit ninety-three, I think, just in the far.
Yeah.
We were in the hills today. And since we were just there like three or four days ago, it is totally chill.
Drier?
Some of those nice basin slopes now, they're just cold too. Get them up quick. Usually up there, it's about ninety-two hundred feet. It's always cool. You know, the top thing is, it's always cool, it's.
Still saying.
Should be starting to cool down sometime.
Howdy.
I don't know if you moved.
Good, how are you? All right.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
Be better than I. I'll ask him.
Okay, I'll just hang out there for now.
Sounds good, yeah. Thanks.
Thanks.
Got a little compaction going on.
Finally, huh?
Yeah, a little stuck in there. Maybe for yesterday. Yeah, I did, you know, just right there, that whole side is compact, it looks like treated with blueboard.
Yeah, but they haven't made anything. Besides that compaction, the dirt will be worn, right?
Yeah, well, then they'll put that blueboard on that dirt.
Yeah.
Then run the packs on that.
That's what I'm saying, they haven't got nothing nice.
Oh, no.
You know.
But it's a. My just house starts. Great, but. I don't need that. Close. It's all that there. Yeah. And they, they get as far as the west side or the east side. They have one section, so I can go over the actual sidewalk. And then just that, I'd say that thing is like.
Yeah, I didn't see you.
They know what they're doing, but after things, they're doing that.
They come, they, when they saw they'll put dirt over it.
Yeah, and then call them too, call them creative.
Yeah. So, um.
I'm sorry.
Well, I never.
I'm sure you're all about.
Names in my center, my.
It's hurt, so like, I know in my house.
Oh, yeah. Uh, yeah, gravel right there and, yeah.
Thanks.
That's okay.
Oh.
I was getting ready for my new teachers and that's just as well.
Thank you. You want the concrete, once that concrete moves that heat, that's where it's never supposed to be.
I thought this, I was like sand, because as long as the sand.
Stuff like that all week. Thirty, yeah, I'm such a slow type, although. Sometimes I taper toward things, but it's, it's hard sometimes. It's been so cool, but you have to see like the most. Drive way in, the aim of that. It's never been wet, not with those two foot stretch walls. And if you turn around, the door is fine. It's no good. Well, it's all that's just dry. I wouldn't be.
You know, when somebody goes to start.
Like, you think if you wet water on all over it, it's gonna maybe.
You know, hand them somebody else later.
I, yeah. Darby, did you ever figure out if we're gonna turn that stuff in person?
Well, Tony put mine.
So, I think you could just set this. God, I wish I didn't know she was going, I said mine. Yeah, well, that's all we have to do is.
I almost called at two thirty today, but I was like.
I have called a handful of times and it'll rain for. Rain for like forty seconds and then the phone call just drops. It's done.
Um, maybe I'll try emailing.
Well, Darby. Yeah, Tony brought his in.
She's.
Probably not physically.
Yeah, I don't know why you would.
I don't know if they check the rain or something.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know yet, you know? I know when I first moved here, you had to do all that just to vote, but then once you're here, you're here.
You're there, yeah. Nicole, you sent me that, right?
Yeah, but it's probably more than, I, I was just trying to be prepared. I don't know if you need all that.
So, I just fill that out and I can send it with anybody who's dropped off. If I decide to.
That's what I understood, um.
Court now, correct?
I tried to get back, it used to be.
Well, obviously you get it. We got till the twenty-fourth, correct?
Mm-hmm, twenty, I, I don't know, I think it closes on the twenty-fourth, I don't know what time. Did you do a whole packet, Darby, or did you do extra stuff?
Well, I did some of the packet, but all I needed was that first sheet.
Okay, because I know they, they end up like counting you guys later saying, what did you spend, whatever.
Well, the expenditure sheet, yeah.
Yeah, then they're always scrambling later to try and get that, so I figured send it all at the same time.
Never spend.
I know, but you still have to turn something in, so even if there's zeros or whatever.
Well, I did.
I think, I think in previous years, they put how much they spent on gas, like if they went back and forth or something, but.
Does anyone?
I'm talking about it.
Are we?
Just Darby so far, I checked today. Thanks, Darby. Yeah.
You haven't printed it off yet?
No.
But the further.
Yeah.
But you gotta catch it before it kicks. Can you mow it before it gets?
Into the.
Real, real dog stuff. Hi Albert, how are you doing?
Albert, how are you guys?
Robert? Good, Robert.
Albert, how are you? Good, how are you?
How are you?
I'm all right.
Good, how are you?
Hi Alan.
How are you?
Oh, thanks.
Good. That's not enough for you, you got to throw some coffee in there.
Okay.
More than.
Good.
You?
I don't know if that's true or not.
I would use it. There must be some avenue.
Of course.
Like, you're in the fun school district number nine through the hill. We're gonna have a tall mall.
Yep, that's it, there you go. Well, see, they give you more room than most for distance. Is there something to?
Darby? Did you? What's that?
Is there some reason for that?
Yeah, because I stink.
Is this hot enough to grow your second crop of alfalfa?
Really, it's about a boot high.
Really?
It's terrible.
How was your main crop?
Good.
Normal crop, good?
Our.
Hay crop wasn't that great. I changed the baler, so I don't know if the bales are tighter, I mean, I don't know about that.
How long's up on hay?
He baled the last thing I cut today.
So, lucky for.
Hey, Albert. You seen, you seen that cross somewhere?
How are you?
I don't.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you? All right.
For a little more. Mower it.
Oh, I can just go there.
And lawn mower.
For lawn, yeah.
Oh.
Covid rules.
Thank you.
Covid rules.
Yeah, good.
Hi Darby.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
My name?
Been a long evening, got a lot of goodies.
Hi Neil, the last thing I cut. But I'm gonna go back and take note of some stuff on that.
Oh, I gotta help.
Well, you got free time, I mean.
Yeah. Pretty good, I was only.
Oh, I've got a lot of questions on this.
Only missed about one day ahead.
Lack of rain the last couple of days is doing nice, I'm not sure it's getting closer.
And I haven't had a ton of, obviously, but you know, for the most part, it's stuff early in the morning.
Hi Amy.
So, the states were able to begin to.
Don't talk about that, what do you want us to do?
I don't know. I think we should get one technology.
There you go. We are gonna hire a technology consultant to see whether we could find any efficiencies. Because we're spending, you, you don't, oh, man. I mean, the, the Y dot RIS system alone costs sixty-three billion dollars. It's crazy. How do you spend sixty-three million dollars on a platform? It's like, oh, and we have all these efficiencies and we never get rid of people, right? It's, they have to have more people to run the technology. I don't know. Don't get me started on that. And then you buy into these maintenance agreements. Escalates five to seven percent a year, you have no control over it unless you do that agreement upfront. You guys should never go into a platform unless you guarantee what your maintenance agreement's gonna be. Because they'll turn that, it's not about maintenance, it's called, it's really blackmail. It's extortion to run that, your thing that you bought the rest of this career. Am I right or am I wrong, Amy? Extortion.
You could call it that. If you really like it, you gotta keep it written.
This is about as warm as you see it this late in August.
Supposed to heat it up.
Finally got a little rain here. We, we didn't have any, it's kinda hit the end of the roads out there.
Getting wind?
It's out.
It's wind?
Every day, every day. I mean, for a while, if you had too dry hay, you couldn't rake it and bale it, right?
Right.
God. Kai baled the last thing I cut today. I got one, couple of the patches to cut when I draw.
About come then?
Other than the stack bales.
That's good.
It's nice to get it wrapped up anyway. We've got two loaded tractors go down, so. We gotta wait till we get the bale on the rig tractor, I'll go down to the loading. Four weeks stack.
Those bears.
No, I told you a week ago, not so bad. But we're up. I think we're up to forty-five in front of hills now, something like that. It's still not as bad as a lot of years, but. We're doing pretty good, and then we got hit pretty hard last night.
A little bit bad, not forty-five.
Yeah, well, we've been as high as ninety, confirmed. Between bears and wolves.
How many?
Ninety.
And how much of that?
What's that?
How much of that?
You know, we get paid if, if they're calves, because they'll pay us on a factor, compensation factor, so. Three and a half to one, I think, on bears, and six or seven to one on wolf kids, on calves, one. So, it's not, it's all the other mess that causes. I don't think our conception rates are as good as they were ten years ago.
Thank you.
I could not wait.
Thank you.
You need any of them bears down this way?
Not around now.
They caught a bear on us this year that was thirty-four years old.
Really?
Thirty-four years old. We seem like that.
I think they grew back, huh?
That's, that's the experience.
I wanted to show you the teeth in his head. There's not many, if I can find it. Who I sent that to last?
Better every hour.
Okay, good tip, I'm not very good with this.
You have to try it later. Uh, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Darby, would you please pledge allegiance to this?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and in liberty and justice for all.
Do we have many people that are a drink?
Have a few administrators.
And one community member.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna start with additions and or receptions of the agenda, the recommendation is for the board to accept the agenda as stated, entertain a motion.
It's been moved.
Second. It's been moved to second, all prepared, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, approved minutes of the gen, July fifteenth, twenty twenty, regular board meeting, in a separate session, all entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Approved claims of payroll for August twenty twenty, all entertain a motion to approve claims of payroll for August twenty twenty.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Now, we're gonna move down to reports and delegations, and the first one on the agenda is the legislative update, and Representative Albert Summers. You got it.
Mister Chairman, thank you, fellow board members, thank you for having me, I wanted to try to reach out to both districts prior to the recalibration meeting that we're gonna have, so. So, legislature every five years looks at the school funding model to see what adjustments need to be made. And during that process, we hire a consultant, and it's Pikes and Hotten, which has been the consultant for the most part for the last. I don't know, since twenty-ten, I think.
I was gonna say last twenty years.
Yeah, it's been, been a, ten years, isn't it? And, and, and so in September, we will get back. We won't get dollar figures, but we'll get back their report that'll talk about, you know, how many personnel for this, that, and the other, you know, how. What would your central office look like, how many staff people, FTEs, it'll basically have the FTEs laid out for what they believe is an adequate equitable education state. And, and then the, the salaries portion of that won't be back until the October meeting. The special ed portion of that won't be back till the October meeting, because we have a, they have a separate consultant, that firm has a separate consultant looking at both of those, and those reports won't be back till October. So, we really won't know final numbers, you know, till sometime in October on, on the dollars. So, question is, will it be higher or lower than the last go? So, that's one issue, right? So, what, how much money will be in this, the new updated model, the recalibration? Reason we do recalibration is the Supreme Court decisions basically mandated the state of Wyoming and the Campbell decisions to recalibrate every five years, assuming that the legislature would never do that. If it wasn't mandated, which is probably fair, we have that statute, so we do it. What I wanna talk to you all about is, and I know you've been hearing about declining revenues, as you well know, you see it locally, you've seen the picture of the gas fields and the coal mines and oil fields. What is it, Wyoming doesn't have an active, didn't have an active one, Craig, a week ago. First time in, in the state's history of it, and, and second time in the state's history. And, so, if you look at the projections out there, so in May, the group that did our revenue estimated, our Craig report, which is the consensus revenue estimated group. They did three projections, they did their normal middle-of-the-road one for revenues, they did an optimistic one for revenues, and they did a pessimistic one for revenues. Kinda give us a, a range of what they thought revenues might, because with the COVID deal, you don't know how fast things come back, so it's pretty, very skeptical. And so, I asked, based upon the most optimistic revenue picture, I asked staff to tell me what the shortfall in education would be. I'm also co-chair of that recalibration meeting, so I kinda need to know how much we're short and, and what's gonna happen. And so, if you take a look at that on the most optimistic revenue picture, we're short two hundred and fifty-one million in twenty-one, twenty-two biennium. And, and then that would be added on in the twenty-three, twenty-four biennium by eight hundred and fifty-five more million. So, think about our property tax, right? Because it's two years out, you all, you know, the, the local government's gonna see the hardest hit coming yet, that's the projection. Because, because of the staggered nature of property taxes and minerals, they have two years, basically, to get that in. And so, that means a total of one point one billion dollars in, in shortfall. So, that was the good news you were told.
By when?
Um, by the end of twenty-twenty-four. And, and so, kinda, and I ran, and to give you an idea of the middle-of-the-road projection, that shortfall for twenty-one, twenty-two was right around four hundred and forty-one million. So, and right now, they, they've done a kind of a July Craig, a snapshot, and we're kinda somewhere in between the, the middle-of-the-road and optimistic, so we gained a little ground. And so, how do we solve that? So, kinda what I, I went through with the Pine Dale Board last night, I'm not saying this is something that's gonna be done, I just wanna show you what it would take to fill that twenty-one, twenty-two hole. So, if we cut a hundred million a year out of education. And we did a one cent sales tax, where sixty-nine percent of that, which is the state share, went all to education. That, that amount would almost fill the hole that, that we need to have. And I think a hundred million a year reductions, sixty-nine percent of the state sales tax would still leave us a deficit of about thirty-five million in twenty-one, twenty-two. And, but we'd be reduced down, the next biennium, we'd have a four, still have a four hundred and four million dollar deficit. So, just to give you a kind of an idea of what a cut would be, so if you think about what's a hundred million dollar a year cut in, in education, the state share. So, the, the total thing is one point six billion dollars a year, the total cost of a year's worth of education. But local puts in their, their share, and then the state puts in their share. So, the state share of, of education funding for a year is eight hundred and forty-eight million. So, that's how much the state is gonna have to kick into it. So, if we were to cut a hundred million, we would be cutting over ten percent. And I just do this to give you an idea of numbers, you know, and I'm not saying this is where anybody's going or where we're going, but I think it's important to understand kind of what it would take. So, it would take over a, basically a ten percent reduction in the state share, which is less than the total, right, the one point six. And I've heard legislators talk up to a twenty percent cut to education in just public conversations that I've heard. And this is stuff that's been on the internet, right? Committee meetings, I've heard it come out of legislator, and legislators up the food chain, not at the bottom of the food chain. And so, you know, I guess to me, and I haven't, you know, I haven't made it any secret. I had my name kind of on that last year. I think we need to do a penny sales tax for education. We just think we're gonna have to, and we're gonna have to do some cuts. And then I think we're gonna have to hope that some revenues come in and that we don't have to repeat that same process again prior to 2223. The thing about, or 2224, the thing about those projections way out there is, well, the only thing we know is they're gonna be long, right? And we just don't know how long they're gonna be. But I, and the reason I want you all to know, one is, is I don't know whether the public understands the level of the deficit we have. If we, in order to fill the deficit, all of the deficit we have, we would have to cut every general-funded employee in the state of Wyoming. General-funded would be your Department of Corrections people, all the people in the Department of Health. That's how, that's how bad it is. Or we would have to cut all of the courts, all of the Department of Corrections, and all of our funding UW, which is half of the funding UW is, to make up the stakes. That's how serious this is. And anybody that says that we can do this by cutting alone, it's not gonna happen. If we do that, we'll be back in the Stone Age in Wyoming. And so it's gotta be a blend of using our savings, of cutting, and of taxes. And it's still gonna be painful, and then we're gonna have to hope we can pull out of it. And the one thing I'm gonna say to you schools is, when we get done cutting, and I don't know where it'll be, and I don't know what it'll look like, but if you guys can provide an adequate education to the kids you have in this district, then you need to seize and force it. And that's just the fact, truth.
What would happen if Southern County seat for, you know, we, Southern County has been funding the public education, or handle it for a long time. What happens if we say, well, we're not consenting to recapture? What, where would that, in your mind, where would that fall?
Well, I think the court would say, you're gonna have to provide the recapture. But what the bigger question is, is can you provide an adequate equitable education to your students?
Well, I can ask about that now, or no?
And I think at some point, you're gonna have to think about that. I mean, if we cut, and I think the other thing, and I've told you guys this before, and you guys hate it, but you need to testify in front of this committee over the course of time. And it's easier now than ever with Zoom. You don't have to go down there. You're laughing, but I'm gonna give them that same lecture I give every time. And you all, as administrators, you need to say, this is what we need to tell these board members. If we cut 10%, these are the programs we're gonna have. If we have to cut 20%, these are the programs we're gonna have. We have to cut 30%, these are the programs we're gonna have. And then you guys, as decision-makers, and really the best lobbyists in the state of Wyoming, can come and say, you're gonna only allow me to have this in my school? Is that fair? And so I think that's why it's important for you all, and I told Pine Dale the same thing. Figure out what those cuts, you know, you can't say for sure you do it, but you can say, it would require us to cut this, this many people, this many, these many programs. And I think in the end, can you provide the halfway success rate? If you can't do that, and we mandate it in the state, then I think you have a pretty good case. And I'm often called the education whore down there in the legislature, because I support education pretty strongly. And I'll continue, but I'm gonna tell you, you're gonna have cuts coming. And then you all, as districts, are gonna have to decide whether it's too much or too little. And it's gonna be a hell of a debate.
Well, I can tell you right now, Albert, School District Number Nine, I don't know if this district will take another cut. I mean, we're fair and honest now. We're teaching through the halfway. That's where we're at, as far as this district. That's where we're at. Somebody's had a district, so, you know, their way of it is, you know, you take the Casper's and the Cheyenne's, and they have courses that, you know, you know, that kids are offered way more. And you know that, but I mean, that's just facts. It is. I mean, we're not, I mean, let's not hide it. That's the truth. You know, if we could offer advanced chemistry or advanced, you know, some of this stuff, it'd be great, but we can't afford it. You know? So you teach through the halfway, so a kid has a chance to college if he wants to go that way. And that's, that's just where we're at. And you can take a number 10% or 20%, 20% of, you might as well hold this close up, like me. You know, I've looked at the numbers.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Yeah, I mean, you got paid people. I mean, you can't expect people to work for nothing, none of us do. Shouldn't expect them to. And that's gonna be a tough sell for you down in the state. I mean, you know, they're not gonna listen to the, they don't worry about big money. I mean, that's, that's.
That was well timed, I don't know.
But that's just the facts of it.
Yeah.
Remember, I'm sure there's more schools in our shape. I mean, you take the T E C, or you take, oh, there's a lot. Yeah, there's probably more so in our shoes than in the other shoes. So the big schools, the 4A schools are, they're doing well because they have more to offer to the kids. How do these other states do? Could have been, I mean, we've been decreasing well in the last 20 years and we've kicked a butt. These other states, you know, Illinois and some of these, we've never been. Here we are now forever, and they're pressing on, you know, the school, doing okay, so.
Wyoming has the most equitable funding system in the nation. We take from the rich and give to the poor. Most other states, the state will have a resource they give to the local districts, but then locals will tax their population to get what, you know, what they can for education. So if you have a, you have a rich district in Colorado, it's gonna be doing really well. You have a ghetto district in Denver, probably not as good.
Everyone's on their own.
And the state does some equalizing, but there's a reason that Utah and Idaho and Montana, Montana pays their teachers rubbish. And, you know, but they don't have to fund at the state level. They don't have to guarantee every child the same.
We'd be, I don't know.
It's true.
We'd be really, we'd be way good.
Yeah.
10% would be our entire custodial maintenance, building maintenance budget gone. No electricity, no utilities, no, that's essentially 10% of our budget. If you tap on to that, the fact that we were shorted $400,000 in expected revenue and still paid for recapture, that's about a $1.4 million hit on top of 10% in applied revenues.
Will you get some of that back?
We'll get it next year.
Next year.
But not at the same time that an entitlement district gets their first payment. So we pay that in May, has to be to the state by June. Entitlement districts got their payment in July. I will get that $400,000 till October. So we're living on reserves right now to stretch it through the end of summer into a very, very, a not normal situation where cash flows are hampering us. If you went 20%, I don't know how we'd run it.
Yeah, I heard the chairs of revenue both say, talk about a 20% cut to education. And so it's just.
You could do it on top of ADM. I mean, we're taking almost a $200,000, $300,000 cut in loss of students just enrollment average every year. So if you do that on top of a natural cut, that is a mechanism of the funding model, you're just piling on on a situation where, you know, you cut some muscle, you cut the fat. And we cut a little more fat, and now I'm getting down to the bone. Because you just will not be able to, you'll have us, like John said, what those kids need to graduate, the 26 credits that they have to leave here with, that's what we're gonna be able to teach.
What we're doing on that one, basically.
We are doing that now, basically, and, you know, Albert and I, I was smiling when you talked about, testified before the committees, because it's always such a welcoming group when you get to speak to them. But I, I just, I think one of the big arguments that I've been involved in or hearing is that we, I'm happy to hear you talk about the one cent tax. We cannot cut our way out of this deficit. We have to create some revenue somehow. It's just, it's just too big.
And if the election went wrong today, and the right side of that took over, then it's, then that's what's gonna happen?
That's the disaster scenario right now. Try to cut your way out of it. That's where the 20% or higher cuts come in.
Yeah. So I just encourage you, and I like I always do, to be a part of the process. And I really do mean that. And I, and I think it's really important for legislators and the public to hear what are the consequences of these, if you went to these other cuts? Because there are numbers on a paper to us down there. I mean, I, we all think about it, right? But when I made, you know, when I've been on appropriations for four years, and I had to cut a whole lot of stuff. And I know what it is. It's people, it's people's lives, it's people's kids. It isn't much fun. You guys have had to do it, right? You've had to get rid of employees you like, programs you like. It's not a lot of fun.
No, it's not.
And so it's a tough, you know, it's just kind of a tough time ahead of it. Oh, we'll get through it, but, you know, it's gonna just take all the tools we've got and the people that are running, and I don't care who hears it, people are running on this no-tax budget. We don't understand what that's gonna do to the state now. We don't want to overtax. That's different, to assume that we're gonna have no tax and have anything left is wrong.
Is there none of the lottery funds being used for education at all?
No, and the lottery makes so little money with its, those little, those little gaming devices in all the bars now are gonna start to give us a little money after that law we passed last year. They were kind of illegal devices, and they kind of made them temporary illegal for a year. And they'll make a little money, but the lottery doesn't make much money. Paramutual is another one. It makes a little more money, but it, that goes kind of back to local government. And they're pretty, they don't want to share. The good thing about, you know, there's a constitutional mandate in Wyoming to fund education and to fund the courts. We, we have to fund, you know, if a person is arrested, you have the choice. You don't have to arrest anybody, but if he's arrested, then he has constitutional rights. And then we have to fund that. So we have to fund courts, and we have to fund schools.
But they were gonna change that last year, I think.
What's that?
To overturn the constitution.
The thing that's based on you?
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah.
Well, how far did that go?
It come to the House and died.
That's where it should have died.
You know, I can't predict, you know, how this election's gonna turn out and whether there'll be more sympathy for that in the House going forward. I certainly do not want to change the constitution, but there's a lot of, there's a, there's a group that wants to do that. That's the biggest thing. In order to change the constitution, it would require a vote of people. And, you know, I mean, we can start a new motion in the legislature. In the end, it's a vote of people, and I would hope that people would.
The sample killed us the last time. That's where we lost all of our recapture.
If they were to properly, you should be able to.
So.
Okay, anything else for Albert?
Good news is, sun's still shining, we're gonna have another day tomorrow.
That's it, that's very true.
Well, I appreciate your time, and I text him all the time and fairly regularly. I didn't give him hell about his haircut, finally got one.
Yes, you have.
I thought I was gonna have to do ponytail for him.
Thanks, Albert.
Thanks.
Thanks, Albert. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, the principals are here, although there are principal reports on the agenda. If you would like to hear from them.
Just welcome back, everybody, I guess. Hopefully, we get a good start, and that's what we're going for.
We're gonna get a good start.
Okay, we're gonna move down to 4.2 superintendent report. Mr. Berber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will try to be brief. We have the sidewalk project going, and what's, what's left to be finished is in front of the school, and we're hopeful for the future. The middle school project continues. We've recently found, we've had some change orders because we found a little bit more asbestos in a wall that they discovered has to be removed, so. But that, that project is moving forward as well. And over the next few days, the high school and elementary four gyms are gonna be refinished and at last. We're ready to go on our opening for Tuesday, the 25th. All of our positions are filled. The principals have recently attended a training for our new teacher evaluation tool. And the teachers are gonna get training on that as well. I have attended countless Zoom meetings with W D E superintendent's organization, and most recently with the county. All have been informative, and it's all just in line, everything's in line with the governor's orders. We should be good to go. We spent a lot of time this summer preparing to maintain social distancing in every classroom. We've moved a lot of things, which means students are not gonna have to wear face masks in any classrooms. They are gonna have to wear them on the bus in accordance with the governor's edict and in passing in the halls. But we've tried to get that information out there, and hopefully that will appease some people. And then I have to read this part, so I don't forget anyone. We have to thank, I have to give thanks to a lot of people who have offered to assist us. Dr. Kennard, the dentist in Pine Dale, who was previously volunteer as a pole vault coach, is donating a device to us for sanitizing and disinfecting the gyms. Ultra donated $6,000 for the principals to purchase what they thought they might need in terms of desk dividers or face coverings or whatever. Dr. Fitzsimmons met with the administrative team. Many people gave their time and energy to discussions throughout the summer on the Smart Star plan. The governor sent us 3,000 cloth masks, and the county emergency team delivered them to us. The town of Marbleton gave us 500 cloth masks. Students helped us with the summer snack program. We had a lot of staff who worked throughout the summer. Nicole, the business office, the maintenance and custodial staff. I did a lot of things to get us ready for the school start that we're not normally doing, or we're not used to doing. And the administrators worked on a lot of their days off to help us get ready for this most unusual of starts. And we're ready to go on Tuesday.
What are we doing, given as far as the, I mean, if we have a kid that comes in and says, no, I'm not wearing this? Because you hear all this stuff that there's no way you can make people wear masks or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I actually don't think that's true, because the governor said you shall wear masks in situations where social distancing is not possible. We're sort of hoping we can handle that with calling it a dress code violation and just move forward. We're gonna make masks available to the kids.
So that's what I was looking, how are they, are we asking them to bring their own masks?
We have, we have asked them to bring their own mask. That was part of our Smart Start Plan, because at the time, we were gonna have to come up with like a hundred and six thousand masks, which were hard to get, we didn't know if they'd get, but we also thought if the family provided them, they'd hang on to it a little bit better. If you've ever seen our Lawson's Found Tables, the parent teacher conference, it's amazing what kids let go. So, but we, and we hope they'll still do that, but we have masks for them if not. And, and in essence, we have five masks for every kid in school, and, and we set cloth masks. We also have a bunch of throwaway masks. We're set up to launder the cloth masks. We have a system where when you're tired of using one, you throw it in the basket, we're gonna take them and clean them, disinfect them, and give you another, and so. So we're ready to go to that, and we're, we're, we really are hoping to limit when that has to happen, but it's pretty clear when they're gonna have to, have to put a mask on.
What about our cleaning and disinfecting when the kids leave? How, how extensive is that, can be different than more?
The, the difference is, we're really focused on having it happen when the staff isn't here.
That's what you mean, how they, is it crazy? I mean, we have to do some?
No, it's not crazy, and we did it throughout the spring. You know, because we let the staff still come in, we were still, we were still trying to do, when you're not here, disinfecting. So we're, 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 we're set to disinfect everything. We've, we've put in a couple of devices that are gonna disinfect and clear the air in our cafeterias, a couple are still coming in. For our cafeteria gym areas, we're gonna have stuff to, to dis.
Is that daily, every night? How does that work?
Runs, runs every night.
Every night?
We're gonna have, we're gonna provide this, teachers with stuff that if they wanna wipe down the desk in between periods or whatever, to disinfect the desk, they can do that as well. They'll, they'll have that as a resource, so, so.
What do they recommend as far as, are they more worried about the tabletop or the air?
It's the air.
So what do you, I mean, what do you recommend they do? I just, I mean, lights on? What do they say?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we have a hospital kind of spray, we talked about spraying our way out of the rooms and spraying our way out of the bus.
Trying to talk to the.
So the bus is gonna have extra masks in case the kids.
Bus, they're all gonna have masks, and they're all gonna have some hand disinfectant. Kids put their hands out, when they get on, they'll, they'll spray. We're lucky in that we don't have any buses that haul more than fifty kids, because the Attorney General has rules, you can't haul more than fifty kids, which for a lot of places is gonna cost quite a bird.
Well, we walk great experiences though, through two routes.
Yeah, two routes, and, and every, every district in this state has the same problem we have, which is who's gonna drive the bus? Everyone has, has difficult time with less traffic.
So, so, cause our custodians will have to come in, like, say, after basketball practice and stuff?
Yeah.
After football practice, come in lockers at six, and then do the.
We've, we've messed, we've definitely messed with their lives, and their schedule has changed, and, and things like that, but they, they've, they've taken it on, which is great. But the other part of that is, and I hate it when I talk about this stuff, like, I know what I'm talking about, but it seems to be more of an airborne spread disease than a, than a contact with a, with an object kind of disease right now. So we're gonna treat it as if you can still get it off the objects, but we're, we're, we're trying to focus on that airborne part of it, which is where the masks come in for us.
So have all the areas been identified that are impractical for maintaining six-foot distancing? And will the kids know when they enter them areas?
Yeah, the students are gonna know, are gonna be directed to put a mask on when that happens. And, and those areas are, in the high school, it's a transition in the halls, that's a definite. Middle school, same thing. We feel like we might be able to manipulate the kids in the elementary school enough that they're not, they don't have passing times, and the teachers determine their schedule, and things like that, so we're gonna try to limit that, whether you contact.
So, so what's the plan when we get a positive test?
Do you mean what to expect if a student or staff member tests positive for COVID-19? The plan has been written out by the Department of Public Health. They'll, they'll do all of the contact tracing, they'll direct us on, on that. All, all I'm, all I'm authorized to do is close a school building. Like, I'm not authorized to close a school. That's the county public health, state public health.
What, so they also possibly close a school?
They don't want to. So they, they, they want to keep it open, they want to treat it as a sin, as an incident in a building, and we might close for a day or two to, to do our disaffected bombing kind of thing with the classroom, and special cleaning, and try to get people back as quickly as possible.
So, so we're not, we're not required to test every kid in elementary?
No, we're not, no.
If one kid gets it, I mean, if we don't have to do that.
No, no, they'll do the contact tracing, and they, and, and so, as best I understand it, is there's, there's two things, there's isolation and there's quarantine. If you've been tested positive, the public health officer or nurse will say you need to be in isolation. If you've been in contact, then you're quarantined. Isolation seems to be a ten-day thing, and there's supposed to be three days without symptoms in there, and quarantine is a fourteen-day thing. So what we're trying to be set up to do is provide those kids with a homebound education program while, if they have to be home. The impossible part for us will be the teachers to become quarantined. We don't have enough subs, we don't have the subs, and so that'll put us all in a virtual sort of, a tier three, and what we did in the spring.
We're not going there.
No, we're, we're hopeful for a good start, and, and, and Dr. Fitzsimmons sat right here, and he was encouraged by the, by the rodeo had happened, the concert had happened, the county fair had happened, and there was no big explosion. And so he's encouraged and feels like.
The people that do, seems like, compared to March and April, it seems like the people that aren't getting it now are having a few little symptoms, and, I mean, as far as in our little town, as long as we know, I mean, it doesn't seem like anyone got super sick, so that's, that's positive, maybe it's, maybe it's weakening or something.
I mean, yeah, well, if you look at, I, I guess, what was it, there's been thirty-eight in the county that's positive, and there's just one right now. So the reports I get is everyone's recovered, one person is not yet. This is the University of Utah.
So I just knew, I just knew I'd get you on some questions, you guys are prepared, you're ready.
Yeah, we feel, we feel ready.
It's awesome.
Can you just solve, I probably shouldn't know this, but I don't, the dress code violation, does that entail, it gets to that?
It's, it's misdemeanor.
Oh, really?
It's not.
But, yeah.
But I, I, I fear that, the biggest place I fear is the bus. I'm really helped to, you've got a lawyer on the, on the bus, and I'm gonna get some, I'm gonna get some door back on that, I'm gonna try to work our way through that.
And even if the kids are a little chilly after a while, can we keep some windows open in the buses, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, that's a good idea, but, you know, we, we encourage parents in, in everything we've written, and say, if you don't believe in this, bring your kid to school. Why, why, why get into this with us? We, we, I don't have any options, somehow. You don't have, you don't really have any options either. The governor said shall, and shall means will.
Any more questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move down to unfinished business. Five point one, second reading, final vote, revise and adopt policy, E F A, health and wellness, the recommendations for the board to adopt the revised version of the policy. E F A, health and wellness, and replace the previous version. I'll entertain a motion. It's been moved to second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Now we're gonna move down to community comments. Do we, are we gonna have any?
Should I go ask?
Yeah.
She's.
We don't have any community comments, so we'll move down to new business. Seven point one, consent agenda, approve and adopt the revised Title IX policies slash forms. The recommendation is for the board to approve and adopt the revised Title IX policy and forms, A C non-discrimination, A C dash R, non-discrimination harassment complaint procedure, A C A, sexual discrimination harassment, A C A dash E one, sexual harassment complaint form, A C A dash E two, witness disclosure form, and A C E section five oh four stated. Is there any discussion? I gotta have a motion first. I have a motion, that.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second, there's any discussion? It sounds like this is like a, what'd you tell me? Two thousand page deal? And Tracy's been working on it for like three months, and this is the way it's gonna be. That's all I can add to the conversation. And so all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Seven point two, approve and adopt school district number nine's Smart Start Plan. The recommendation is for the board to approve and adopt the school district number nine's Smart Start Plan as stated, I'll entertain a motion.
It's been moved.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussion?
I have one question, it might not be appropriate, but is it just for the twenty twenty-one school year?
Ye- yes. I hope, I hope so.
We might even be able to do something with it in twenty-one, man.
Could answer. I think it might Catholic be for you.
And is this, is this just us?
This one is, yeah. Every district, I have to develop their own.
And, uh, have you, have been in contact with them, they all similar?
Yeah, they're all, they're all really.
Right, they're really similar.
Because there were fifty-four pieces of it, but this thing had to say yes to it. So that guidance was pretty firm. You had to get a hundred to get that into approval.
The university didn't follow, so. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Seven point three, approve and adopt the Wyoming High School Smart Start Plan, I should say Athletic Association Smart Start Plan. The recommendation is for the board to approve and adopt the Wyoming High School Act, Kid and his Association's Smart Start Plan as stated, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Okay.
All opposed, motion carried. Seven point five, no, seven point four, designate principals as disciplinary and attendance monitors. The recommendation is for the board to designate principals as disciplinary and attendance monitors for the elementary, middle, and high schools of the district for the twenty twenty-one school year. All in favor.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second, any discussion?
This is the every year, right? It's. Every year. You have to give them your authority to, to follow. Of course, this is key, it's.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Seven point five, approve special education contracts for the twenty twenty-one school year. Your, uh, the recommendation is for the board to approve the four, four oh six special education contracts for the twenty twenty, in the twenty twenty-one school year, not to exceed the total of seventy-eight thousand five hundred. All entertain a motion. Been moved to second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, seven point six, consent agenda staff handbook, substitute handbook and coaches handbook changes. The recommendation is for the board to approve the handbook changes as presented. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second, any discussion?
Yes, Chairman, um, page eleven of the staff handbook. They see that we've more than doubled the stipend for the zero hour wait supervision? Is there a basis for that?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, there, there's, there's two reasons. One is only one person is doing it this year, it has been two, so it has been split in the past. And, and we, because they get a change in pay as they, as it does, up this year, we're paying them essentially an hourly rate for, for taking that on.
So we've reduced the number of people in there, and then taken the money that we would have spent for two, and basically applied to one, plus an increase in that. Right, thank you.
That's it. Anybody else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Seven, uh, seven point seven, approve bus routes for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year is rec, the recommendation is for the board to approve the bus routes for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved to second, any discussions? Now we got all the bus routes covered.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and they are identical to last year's bus routes.
What about the drivers?
We have all the drivers, as far as I know, there's, there's one that we're a little unsure of, probably, I think, if we get out.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Now we're gonna move down to eight point one, next tend to the Board of Trustees Meeting Day. The recommendation is for the board to schedule the next regular board meeting for Tuesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven P M. in the Minar Center Board Meeting Room. All entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Been moved to second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Nine point one, meeting adjourned, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Been moved to second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Thanks, everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Can I have a question? I was wandering around, I think, holding forward walking the front door, and what are we gonna do if somebody wants to come visit our school now?
We're, we're, we're considering the east door, the, the northeast door is our main entrance until we can.
So will it be a bell? I mean, how will, somebody know?
Right, and you can ring that bell, and it rings into the, the, the air phone, just like this building, they can see you on the video, speak to you.
So are we using our, the key cards and stuff, and we're up and running? How is everybody?
They're unhappy. It works, they're unhappy, and the limit we've given them, not all of them, but some. Goes back to this, we're trying to say everything's a COVID rule now, this isn't our new, we're not gonna stay with this stuff. Right now, we're limiting their access, things are a little bit, so that we're sure no one's in there after, if, if they're.
We're just leaving.
Teachers, teachers.
Have a good night.
They got seven to seven.
She's got to be blessed for this, the COVID day.
Yeah, this, this is a COVID day, and so we can say it's for clean, and, and, you know, I hate to discourage people who wanna work for free, you know, their money come in, they wanna do that. Lots of times, the kids come with them. Someone has to supervise them. The other thing we're gonna face, Bill, is, and I just told John, is we're, we're gonna, open gym. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to opt in to limiting it just to our students while COVID's happening. So that we don't have other, you know, it's always, it's been open in there.
Nicole, are we still on? Okay. Okay, so we passed just mainly the bad.
Yeah, just again, COVID rules.
Oh, for sure.
The second, the second it's over.
So, what, what are limits? Like, custodians will have full level of the key card.
And the principal is all crystals have full.